I will get us started and I will call our work session to order being being held virtually via WebEx of February 23rd, 2021. And it's a joint work session between the city council and the planning commission. And it's a presentation and discussion on draft updates to the city subdivision ordinance. So I will pass it to our city manager, Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm going to pass it directly directly to Assistant CD Director Melissa Palman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the planning commission. Tonight, the presentation is going to focus on explaining when and how we use our subdivision and plating ordinances to begin with. Because I imagine several of you have not reviewed this section ever. And you wouldn't need to necessarily, but before we get into the policy changes that we're recommending, we're going to take you through what it does and what its purpose is. And then the discussion tonight is going to focus on the policy aspects of the ordinance. So we're going to talk about the approval process rather than focus on the technical details. There are still a lot of those things that are going to be worked out. The Public Works Department is still going through the ordinance. And to give you a little background, this ordinance has been on our list to revisit since I started, I believe, since John started. So there's a lot of stuff in here that doesn't make any sense anymore. There are references to positions that haven't existed in the city since I've been here. It just needs a good thorough update, really a start over. But what we're looking for tonight from you are your thoughts on the process that we're suggesting, the approval process that we would take Platts and subdivisions through. Overall, again, the intent of these changes is to clarify what we do when a plat comes in or a subdivision request, the process that the applicant will go through and the process, the approval process that you will go through. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan Kurzas. He is our new planner. For those of you who haven't been introduced to him, he's going to take you through our presentation tonight. And then we'll probably do questions at the end, just because with such a large group and kind of a technical presentation, I think that's just going to be easier. So I'll turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you, Melissa. I do have some slides, so. And I would be happy to distribute my presentation after the meeting tonight. Can everyone see the first slide? All right.
Yes.
A little trouble getting to the next one. One second. All right, there we go. So the subdivision ordinance is by its nature, a tool that is one of, one within the planning and zoning arsenal that is really intended to carry out the comprehensive plan by establishing procedural issues relating to the division of land. And that presumption is that division of land is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So in by division of land, I'm referring to subdividing parcels into smaller lots or blocks or development sites for for either sale or transfer of ownership for or for development itself. And I just want to clarify that there in in this context, we're defer referring to the specific division of land. In other contexts, sub context subdivisions can be thought of neighborhoods. But this is specific to the mechanism of physically changing legally defined parcels of land. The two main drivers in terms of goalposts for how the city can enact and carry out subdivision review are two state statutes in particular. The first one being the Municipal Planning Act, which lays out the procedures, timeline, and just general parameters of how and when subdivision review and approval can take place. And the second is a separate section regarding plating as an instrument. I'll, I will get into a little bit of the differences between just general subdivisions and plating specifically in in subsequent slides. But these are the the goalposts that the state gives the city in terms of reviewing subdivisions. For additional context, most of the city is subject to a subdivision plat. And these plats have existed for quite a long time. Again, this compromise comprises most of the city. And I just wanted to show that it this map, just to, I guess, underscore the fact that we're talking about subdivisions can include smaller developments, not not whole scale neighborhoods like often can be. Subdivisions can be kind of confused with. Melissa touched on this briefly, but this is a section of code that has not been holistically that in quite some time. So with the the current exercise that staff is going through, first and foremost was to align the subdivision ordinance with the current state statutes in terms of timelines and procedures. But also while we were looking at it, we wanted to modernize the process and align it with in terms of how how development is just generally is reviewed in the city. This was also an opportunity to reevaluate the roles of council and the planning commission traditionally. And I'll touch on this a little bit later, but the planning commission did not have any involvement in subdivision review. So we wanted to take a look at that. And also, we wanted to explore potentially allowing some straightforward requests to be administratively approved. So again, you'll you'll have a, I'll go into depth on that in a subsequent slide, but that was one of the aims. And then finally, looking at aligning our submitted requirements in terms of what comprises an application for subdivision and aligning that with the current practice and and getting information to the various city departments that they're really looking for when they're reviewing these types of proposals. The first thing that kind of we started with was just generally reorganizing the structure. There, there was a little bit of instances where sections would kind of jump around. So we really wanted to tie it into kind of what other communities are doing in terms of laying out and organizing the structure. So we start with general provisions, which have sort of the administrative big picture type clauses and provisions relating to how terms are defined and penalties for violations and when when subdivision ordinances generally apply. Then we were spent a lot of the time up to date is detailing how the procedures of subdivision review are to take place. That leads into specific design standards that specific proposals are required to adhere to to be considered for approval. And tying the specific design standards to being implemented is a section that describes how what the obligations of the divider are once they are approved for their subdivision. And then finally, we touched on variances, which we we expanded some of the language and provisions that were in there to make the the process more clear to anyone that's reading the ordinance or administering the ordinance. The general provision statements, the 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 main addition to this section was a series of purpose statements, which in terms of just good ordinance drafting, it lays out, you know, what it is. The city's intent is with having such an ordinance. So first and foremost, promoting health, safety and welfare, while also allowing for orderly and economic development of land. And again, a purpose of this ordinance, the one of the main purposes is to carry out the guidance of the comprehensive plan by providing opportunities to serve new developments with adequate services. And this is all part and parcel to establishing just the general procedures and policies for subdivision review. The next section in general provisions that I wanted to highlight was there, like any most other ordinances, there's a definition section. The draft version that was shared with this group wasn't, it's a work in progress. So we intend to revisit that once some of the more substantive provisions of the the ordinance is flushed out. As I mentioned, the proceed of the bulk of of what we have spent most time on. Specifically, we broke it down into three parts. This draft speaks to a pre-application period and then lays out the 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 planning process as well as introduces a minor subdivision review. With the pre-application, we have an encouragement for applicants to meet with staff to discuss what it is that they're requesting and how it interacts with the the ordinance, just so that there's a clear understanding of for applicants. We codified the administrative review committee process into this ordinance, as is the case with zoning requests. We we model those those requests are firsthand passed off to the administrative review committee for initial comments. And that process lays out sort of some big picture red flag items or defines kind of what other application or permits are needed for for cases. Then finally, we also codified the the requirement that when a when a subdivision of butts either county or state highway, those entities get chance to review and comment on the applications. So moving along to plating, again, that's a specific type of subdivision review that's sanctioned by the state. That is a two step process, including a preliminary plat where where big picture items are laid out in terms of the preliminary lot layout and preliminary grading plan, infrastructure plan. And that request gets reviewed currently by the city council, at which time a public hearing on that application is held. And then once that if approval is granted, it moves along to a final plat application stage. The current ordinance requires a public hearing be held for that. And again, that's a review by the city council currently. So most other communities involve the planning commission as opposition. And that's part of their purview is to be aware of planning and zoning related issues. So the first thing we looked at was maybe having the planning commission as the sole authority over Platts. And it turns out that in Minnesota, that for charter cities, that requires that that authority be vested in set forth by the city charter. So to enact that in Richfield, a charter amendment would be necessary, and that's a lengthy process. So unfortunately, the the draft sort of that that reality and staff is more supportive of the city council as the final approval authority for both the preliminary and final Platts. So the proposed process, it's still required to have a public hearing on the preliminary plat. State statute allows the planning commission to conduct that that public hearing. So that's what we're proposing, that because that would align with public hearings that occur for various other land use applications that that development would have to go through. So there, there would be synergy with the the public hearing within that regard. The planning commission would review and provide a recommendation on the on the plat itself. And that would go on to the city council for approval. And the current draft codifies the fact that the city has 120 days from when a complete application is submitted to to approve that or it's considered approved. Then, once that is in place, the final plat is the stage. And may back up to explain the the final plat a little bit more. That's really, although it sounds like it, it's building on the preliminary plat. At that, once a preliminary plat is approved, the final plat is really just a documentation stage. It really just codifies and puts a a recordable form into place. So there really shouldn't be any changes between when a a preliminary plat or there actually can't be any changes unless the city condition conditions those changes. There can't be any changes once the final plat stage is is applied for. And then finally, the the procedures lay out the recording process. Again, we're not trying to change much in the way of of that. So it's really just codifying the existing practices in terms of how developments are reviewed. A significant portion of or significant new feature of the procedures process is a series of standards which would aid the city council and planning commission in the review of Platts. And this is staff finds that this is important because in a quasi judicial setting such as plat review, the city is obligated to apply only those provisions of the of the ordinance to specific reviews. So that any approvals or denials need to be based on what the what the ordinance provides. So these standards for review really try to get at what the what the approval is trying to accomplish. So a plat that's consistent with the zoning and kinds of planning efforts is as supportable as approvable. And if if the plat area is capable of economically being served by public services and infrastructure, then then it's supportable for approval. And if there's not a repurable harm posed to the environment or to public safety, then then those issues are really the limited basis by which if 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 compliance with those, any of those issues is not present, then that's per per case law, that's really the only justification for denial of of any plat applications. So we propose to incorporate those specific goal goalposts in the ordinance to to help in that review. So there, there are cases that we foresee that would be relatively straightforward. And because of that, we are proposing an administrative review process. This would take the place of the applications that are currently being reviewed as a waiver to the subdivision ordinance that the council approves by resolution. Again, these would be administratively approved. And we tried to get at cases that are, that would be very straightforward in that they're previously planted lots and connected to city services. And the underlying development complies with all applicable ordinances. So this administrative review would apply to lot line adjustments, those adjustments between two neighbors where they might want to move a property line because they found out that a fence was encroaching. Or lot combinations where people are combining a couple of properties that they own to perhaps maybe use that as a development site. And then finally, the last scenario is lot splits that create up to four new lots. That that four was selected because the threshold that's the state gives municipalities is any any subdivision creating five or more lots must be planted. So that's where that four number comes from. Then finally, moving on to, so that that's the procedures that we laid out. Either a subdivision would go through a a plating process or qualifies as a minor subdivision. Those are really the only two options for subdivision reviews. Moving on then to the design standards, what we tried to get at with this section, and it's it's still work in progress because it it does have some of those technical elements that the Public Works Department is well positioned to to weigh in on. The intent was to codify existing practice. And a lot of the existing provisions were just carried over or more fully fleshed out to clarify what it is that's expected when and for a utility arrangement or a delineation of an easement. Go individually through any of those specific areas, but I'd be happy to answer any questions during a question and answer portion of the presentation. And as I mentioned, there's a required improvement section, which defines the obligations of any divider. Within that section, staff is proposing a construction and maintenance agreement, which that would apply to subdivisions where there's public.
Uh oh.
Did we lose Ryan?
I think we lost Ryan, which is going to be trouble because I can't advance the slides.
Melissa.
Yep.
While we're waiting, Brian will probably be back in a second. He'd mentioned the administrative review committee. And could you just describe that to people in case they don't know what it is?
Oh, sure. The administrative review committee is made up of representatives from all of the departments within the city. And it's our internal team that reviews all plant land use applications that come in. So that's really the first step any application goes through. It gets reviewed by community development, public works, environmental health, fire, police. Everyone gets to weigh in and identify any red flags or major things that would need to be changed before we could even take it before the policymakers for consideration. We call it ARC for short. So I'm not, I'm not sure if Ryan's going to come back. His presentation is just about over, you know, just talking about these little kind of loose ends that will also be tied up in the ordinance. But I don't know if Kelly can get the slideshow down. Can we? Is that possible, Kelly? Otherwise, I'm happy to try and answer questions if we want to move to the question portion.
And I'm wondering, before we open up the question portion, if you could just remind us the direction that you're looking for so folks can take that into consideration too.
Right, so, oh, I think maybe Ryan is back. Are you there, Ryan? Maybe not. Okay, so tonight, we're generally looking for feedback on the procedural and policy issues that we're coming up with. So these new, the the new guidelines for where a plat will go on its way to final approval. So the idea that there will be an administrative approval that is possible when a small subdivision meets all of the requirements that you, as the council, have approved, that the requirements that are in your code. If all of those requirements are met, then at a staff level, we could sign off on that, replacing that subdivision waiver process. So we're asking for your feedback on that. And then the process that would essentially combine the public hearing for the land use approvals, for instance, a conditional use permit or a PUD with that public hearing for the plat so that we don't end up where we are now, where we have a public hearing at the planning commission for a land use approval, and then have another public hearing that isn't really considering that, but but the public is confused. And so we're hoping that combining at the public, at the planning commission would eliminate that. So that's really what we're looking for. Is this direction okay? Does this sound, does this sound like we're on the right track?
Thank you so much for that context. Any questions or comments from council or planning commission members on the item? Commissioner Quam, Chair Quam.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry. The parts that I'm really glad it's getting clarified and and that sounds like to meet up better with state statute language, which is always helpful for us. And the parts that stood out to me that I feel, I guess I feel uncomfortable with, from what I understand, is minor subdivisions don't sound that minor to me. If 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 the public has no chance, if the lot next to them is going to divide be divided four ways, they have no option to come to a public hearing if we change it to this. I think they should be allowed a chance to have a public hearing because that is, it's almost a ideology, if you believe in that breaking up, you know, spaces that small. And I think that the public should have a chance to speak, whether it's at the planning commission or as it is now at the city council, it doesn't matter to me. And forgot what the other thing was. I had another thing, but I'm going to pass and I'll come back when I remember it.
Thank you. Other folks? Commissioner Hayford O'Leary and then, I mean, council member Hayford O'Leary. And now, and then Commissioner Whelan after that, council member Whelan after that.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I'm I'm generally in favor of optimizing for the minimum number of public hearings that allow us to hear from the public when we need to. Because I do think it's confusing even for us sometimes and certainly for the public when we're getting duplicative things. And in general, if we're doing a public hearing when there's very little discretion and we don't have to, I don't like it because it it becomes frustrating because people will come up and say they don't want it, but we can't technically consider them not wanting it. You know, I think Commissioner Quam's example, I understand why people would feel strongly about that. But if something needs our meets our minimums and needs to be approved, I I think it doesn't really do those neighbors any good to give the impression that they have the ability to influence it when we're required to approve it. So I would prefer to minimize those hearings when we can, when we don't really give the residents any power to change it at that point.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'm Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a few questions. One, to that point, I I really appreciate and have appreciated, there's several things where this already happened that come up at the planning commission, the the clear, I think it was on a page called approvals, they were referred to as standards, but the like the clear criteria of like what we are judging this on, anytime in staff reports, we get that. And it's like, here is what you can consider, here is why staff thinks it does or does not meet that criteria. You can reinterpret it, but it has to be based on these criteria. That is super helpful. So thank you for for that piece. My main, I'm overall fine with the the process changes. I think involving the planning commission instead of just the council makes a lot of sense for this kind of thing. I just wanted to clarify is I didn't fully understand the difference between what what we initially thought was possible, but requires a charter amendment versus what we're doing now. Is it, is the proposal now still that the preliminary plat process would only require the planning commission, a public hearing and approval there? Okay, I'm seeing shaking heads, no. So then, but that is where the public hearing happens for the preliminary part. And then council would approve it without a second public hearing. But then the final plat would come to council with another public hearing or without another public hearing?
Right, I can, I can see how that's confusing. So the process would be to hold a public hearing at the planning commission for the preliminary plat so that the public hearings are together and they're they're one, one item. Final plat by state statute has to be done by the city council. So then there were there, the preliminary, I'm sorry, the plat has to be approved by the city council unless there's a charter amendment to say the planning commission can give that. So what we were initially planning to do was to hold the public hearing at the planning commission, have it go through the general land use process as it does, but allow that final plat, that kind of rubber stamp essentially, because you've approved the preliminary plat, to happen at the planning commission level. We can't do that without a charter amendment. So that will So that will still come to the council, but there will not be another public hearing. The public hearing will have taken place already. Is that more clear?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Supple.
So all of my other questions have already been answered, but one question would be if we wanted to do a charter amendment, does that require like a public vote or is it something the City Council does? Or why are we avoiding it because it's costly to the city or a lot of time? Or what's involved?
City Attorney Tichin is on and she can take you through that process. It is quite involved.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Supple. So there are several ways that the city charter can be amended. And, you know, this is clearly would be a policy decision for the City Council as to, you know, whether or not they wanted to initiate that process. But the charter can be amended by ordinance that's proposed by the Charter Commission or by the City Council. But there are specific time periods where the proposed ordinance has to be published and there needs to be a public hearing and and it's a several month process in order to make that happen. So it's really just a question of, you know, from the policymakers about whether they want, want to engage in that more detailed process in order to make that happen or not.
Thank you.
Other questions from folks? Councilmember Truman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give staff an opportunity to respond directly to Commissioner Quam's concerns. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary had a response, but I just wondered if staff had any response to those concerns.
Yes, thank you. I can see how that is a concern, that it feels like we're cutting the public out of a process that they would very much care about. In terms of subdivision waivers, we're actually not required to have a public hearing now and we generally don't. It's it's an administrative process. If the lot meets the requirements, the council is obligated to approve. What we're proposing is that if a lot meets the requirements that the City Council has approved for lot sizes, that staff can administratively say, yes, it's approved. The City Council has already approved these rules. Like, like it's been said, it's, it feels a little disingenuous to bring things to public meetings where then the public feels like they can influence the process and they really can't because the the criteria have been established and you have to live with those criteria. At that point, it's an, it's an administrative decision. It's not a policy decision anymore. The policy has been made and set. So so that's why we're proposing that it happen at a staff level. You know, if there was anything that varied from what the code allowed, then it would still go through a process. It would still go to the City Council. There would be a hearing. But if it meets the criteria, we're proposing that they could do that, that we could sign off on that. I will say that, you know, we've set that at four to imagine that there are a lot of spaces in the city where you could legitimately divide a parcel into four lots that would meet all the requirements. There aren't a lot of spots, perhaps the hub, but the hub would be coming for other approvals. So I I don't really see four happening, but there could, there could be cases where someone wants to divide a hundred foot lot into two fifty foot lots and staff would be able to approve that.
Commissioner Quam.
I have a quick question, Melissa, and then I a comment, but the sub, the current subdivision waiver that you, that this would be replacing, is that the same thing as what you're calling a minor subdivision? And currently with the sub, with the waiver, all those things can be done administratively? And then it would just be a renaming, basically?
They are not done administratively right now. They go to the City Council, but the City Council is obligated to approve them. And so right now, the City Council hears from neighbors that are concerned about it, but this, but they're, they're basically bound to approve.
And and I just want to make, this will be my last comment because I feel pretty strongly about it. But I am, I think that at the Planning Commission, we are capable of laying out for the public how bound we are. And I just, it concerns me to take away two public hearings down to zero. And we get such little engagement lately anyway, but I mean, that's not the driver of what I'm saying this. But I think we can make it clear legally, we are bound this way. So if you have comments on this little bit, we would love to hear them. I think we can be clear and not, you know, hurt too many people by that. And and it worries me if we take those away completely. And I think we'll mostly be doing minor subdivisions in this condensed of a city. So. Yeah, so anyway, I just, that's all, stop.
Welcome back, Ryan.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I'll just add a comment and I don't know if I have questions or not, but I think I'm, and generally I'm in favor of the changes that are being made. I understand the reasoning behind them and agree. I do think to Commissioner Quam's point, there's something that, and and I don't know what the answer or the solution is, but some piece that might be missing or how can we use a communication piece to help outline the process for our residents and where they can contribute input and to help us as well on the council or Planning Commission? Because I know those things can be blurry for us as well. So I I guess I don't really know what I'm, what I'm saying outside of there's a communications piece and helping people better understand that process and where we can contribute and make sure that if something's coming up, we on the front end, make sure we're reaching out to those neighbors to say, hey, this is the time and here's, you know, the extent of the Planning Commission decision. Here's, you know, what what we can discuss and not discuss. And that's come up, I think it was mentioned. I don't know if this was mentioned in Ryan's presentation, but where we've tried to look at design elements and that was really outside of the scope and and kind of what levers do we have? And what, at what times along the way can we give input and and what's binding and not? I don't know, there's just so much confusion and I see why we're simplifying and it makes sense. But I also feel like there's just that communication and misunderstanding piece in across different groups.
Director Stark.
So this is a question, Melissa and Ryan and I haven't talked about this specific. So I don't know if they or Mary know the answer. But if we did go the route of an administrative approval for subdivision waivers, would, would there be a process by which a neighbor could have, could appeal that? Do you know? If if a neighbor felt strongly that, that this was, you know, some violation or was infringing upon them in some way, whether they could appeal that and and then have it go through the process that it would have otherwise gone through?
How convenient that everyone goes away when it's the question time. So my take on that would be, oh, there's Mary back.
Oh.
You're back, Mary. Do you want to?
Sorry. What I started to say, can everyone hear me now? What I started to say was, I, I think, yes, that could be done. It would need to be written into the ordinance. I mean, I think that the, the city would have discretion, has the discretion to include whatever process it would like in its, in its ordinance. So that would be something we have to discuss and incorporate into the ordinance itself.
And I also think that the language could be written in a way that didn't compel staff to give an administrative approval, but gave them that option. So in other words, that if something came that was, that staff felt, you know, this is a little bit more complex and this is something we think that the policymakers would want to weigh in on, that we could choose to defer giving administrative approval and take it through the normal process or the the former process.
Assistant Director Palman and then Councilmember Whelan.
Those are good points and we do have those provisions in the zoning code. This is, the subdivision ordinance is in the city code. But yes, it would make sense to include those same, the same language that we use in the zoning code that allows for appeals or for the director to determine that instead of being eligible for a minor approval, it would, it would constitute a major and would need to go to the City Council.
I was just going to say, I, I think, think that makes a lot of sense. I'm thinking, I believe it happened right before I joined council, that on the west side of town, there was one lot that was quite large. It got split into three and that significantly changes a block. And so the neighbors were concerned about that. And so I think if I'm understanding what Mayor Regan Gonzalez was getting at, I I agree that there, like, I don't know the specifics of the, that case, but if there's a situation like that where it is something that neighbors are, like it clearly is going to impact neighbors and the neighborhood, but that are, like, we don't, there is no basis to deny or change the request in this more like judicial role that we sometimes play. I do think it's worth flagging something and whether that's putting it through the more formal process or is some kind of extra communication with the neighbors. But there are, are cases where it would, it would benefit us, I think, to take a little longer and better communicate, even if, even though I do generally think that just having administrative approval is the, makes sense and is the right way to go.
Assistant Director Palman.
I will, I will say that it sounds like maybe you're less comfortable with the idea of more lots. And I mean, you could reduce that number. We've set it at four because that's what statute allows us to do. That's the maximum allowed without a plat. But you could set it lower. You could say that as soon as you're dividing something into three lots, it should come to us. Even though you may not have any greater authority, you could say that that's enough of a change that you should consider it, you know? And I will speak to that lot split where it was three lots. That one would have come to you anyway because the one lot was about a half foot short of meeting minimum requirements. So that is not something that staff could have administratively approved. It had to come to the council and that would be the same.
Councilmember Truman.
I just had a procedural question. You know, there are a number of things that the staff, that staff can do administratively. I know we have from time to time issues where staff issues a fine, but citizens or denizens have the, the right to, to appeal that fine or appeal that decision to, to the council. In this situation, if there, if there was a, a community member or somebody, would, would there be any standing in, in a circumstance if it, if it was handled administratively? Could, could somebody request or move that it be addressed by the council? Or would there not be an option like that?
Councilmember Truman, I believe that's what we were talking about, adding a provision to appeal the decision of staff to the council, just like there is in the zoning code now.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
If, if we were to do this change as described to add this option, would that delay the ultimate approval of these splits? Or would it be pretty much the same timeline, whether it goes through a public hearing or not?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, if they appealed, would it be the same timeline?
Yeah.
It, it would take longer than an administrative approval. It would probably end up being about the same, depending on where it fell in a month. It could end up being about the same as it would have been if we had left the process as is.
Then to how much would it delay it if something gets approved versus it gets appealed after that approval?
If it, if it gets approved, it's probably, you know, within three to four weeks because it would still, you know, go through the process internally. It would go through an ARC review. All the divisions would have an opportunity to comment and review. So that's probably still a three to four week process. When something comes before the council, that automatically will add an additional two weeks because once we do an internal review, then it comes to you. If it goes to the Planning Commission as well, it generally adds four weeks.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Yeah, just to finish my thoughts, I would say I, I still personally don't see the value in adding these additional steps when I think ultimately you'll still be hearing from people who don't want it for various reasons that personally makes sense to them. And we're still going to end up saying yes. And I think that just creates a lot of frustration and it makes people feel not heard. That said, I don't feel super strongly, if it's fairly rare about it delaying it four weeks, I, I think also limiting it to us or just calling the minor divisions up to two also seems like a reasonable step. So I don't feel super strongly here, but I also don't personally see the value in, in adding this, this complexity.
Director Stark.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. That, that frustration is the very reason we're bringing this particular piece of it to you. Because we, you know, I've been with the city now for twenty plus years and I've heard that over and over and over again with these judicial findings that you make that, you know, both citizens coming to us afterwards and saying, why did you even bring this to the council? Why, why do you waste everybody's time in having this discussed when there is no, when there's no authority for them to go outside of, of what the statutes require? But also I've heard it over the years from council members. Council members saying, staff, why do you put us in this position where there's an angry group of people in council chambers who think we can do something that the, the city attorney and staff is telling us we just can't do?
So I realize that we're trying to end early. So I'm wondering if we can try to wrap up the conversation, but I want to make sure that we also finish the conversation too. So Commissioner Quam.
Council Tichin, is that correct? Can you just really quickly explain to me why, since you know the law here, why the plating pre and post, why it ever did allow for public hearings? If absolutely nothing could be changed by a public hearing, it doesn't make logical sense that that was ever laid out that way. If there was zero that could be done based on testimony, thanks.
Well, I don't know that I can speak to the intent of the original law. But, you know, I think that there, there can be input at the very beginning of the process in terms of setting conditions and that kind of thing. But I think it's more towards the end of the process where you have an application that ultimately meets all the requirements of the city's ordinance. That's where there's not discretion, once that's shown to be the case. So, I mean, I think that there could be, you know, some, some input at the initial stages of the process. But, you know, that is, the nature of the quasi judicial process is that there is not a lot of discretion. There really is very, no discretion when the, when the requirements have been, have been complied with. So I hope that answers your question.
So I wanted to ask staff, do you feel like you have sufficient feedback on this? Or is there a piece of it that we do want to make sure we kind of get more clear on?
I know Ryan missed half of the discussion, but I, I do believe we have what we need from you. Ryan, were there any last minute clarifying items you needed?
I, I think we got the big picture items from what I'm hearing covered. And that's, you know, that, that was the goal of this work session.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, and one second, I think we have a text chat. All right. If staff can just clarify or summarize what was heard, that's, that's a good practice. Actually, thank you, Councilmember Truman.
So what we heard was, what we heard was that in general, we are okay with moving toward an administrative review for subdivisions that meet all of the requirements of the code and that are minor as described. We're more comfortable reducing that number of lots down to two, maybe three, but staying away from that high because it. but staying away from that high because it changes the character of the area more. Also that we'd like to look into possibly adding some criteria for an appeal or for making a determination that in fact, a minor subdivision should be categorized as a major subdivision and go through the regular process to council. Does everyone feel that I covered there?
Does that sound right to folks? Yep, looks like it does. Great. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you to staff for bringing this to us and I appreciate the, the intention behind it because you're right, it is a frustration. And hopefully this will help reduce that frustration for everyone involved. And thank you, Councilmember Whelan, for making the request to do the summary of what was heard. I think that is a really great practice for us in terms of wrapping up our work sessions just to clarify the direction that was given or the clarity that we received. So thank you, everyone. I'll call our work session to order, to adjourn. I'm going to adjourn our work session, my goodness.